The Shasbury Select Board. And I'm calling this meeting to order at six thirty on Monday, September twenty one, two thousand and twenty. First item of business is always to check with our select board, see if anyone has a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening.
No.
No.
I do not. Joe?
Joe is muted, it looks like.
If you hover your cursor, it should be in the bottom left, Joe. The mute button for the mic.
Alright, gotcha.
There you go.
Thank you.
So no conflict of interest?
None.
Alright. First up, we have minutes. And remind myself, we have minutes for the seventh and the fourteenth, both were well, the seventh was a regular meeting, but we didn't do much because it was a holiday, so we just did a warrant. And then the fourteenth was also just for a warrant. So I would accept a nomination to a motion to move to approve the minutes for September seventh and September fourteen.
Moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes circulated? In that case, we'll ask for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes for September seven and fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Uh, me. I wasn't here on the fourteenth.
So you're, uh, you want to abstain?
Right.
Okay. So no opposed, one abstaining, so the minutes are approved four zero one. Just, uh, I'll mention again, uh, I have had recent information, something I read on the, uh, read on the web, looking at parliamentary procedure rules, and it's not a requirement that a member abstain from approving the minutes if they were not present at a meeting. Uh, and in fact, it's somewhat encouraged in that it shows that the, uh, the member agrees with his colleague's assessment of the minute, so it's still your prerogative to abstain if you want to.
No, I completely support the, uh, the board.
Well, thank you. We're fine with it as it is, but for future reference.
Good.
Uh, next we have warrants. I have three, if I count correctly. First up is check warrant number ten and the total amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, seventy-seven cents.
Moved.
Motion to approve from Art, seconded by Tony. Major items that I see on here are eleven thousand to FireTech used apparatus sales, and I bet even I can figure out that's for the fire department.
That's right. That's the company's, uh, fee.
Uh, eight hundred dollars to HCT repair.
Some welding repairs to the cat, uh, grader.
We've got, uh, eight hundred dollars to Matt Morris excavating.
That was repunted waterline.
I see several, uh, or a couple, I guess it is. Hundred and sixty-five, four hundred and thirty-six to Shasbury Fire Company.
As, uh, to reimburse one of their guys who bought equipment for the new truck, uh, from another site, to reimburse his spending.
Uh, twenty-four hundred to Wells Communications Services.
That's the radio on the new fire truck.
And those are the eight major items. Any other discussion on check warrant number ten? All in favor of approving check warrant number ten, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So check warrant number ten for eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars, seventy-seven cents is approved. Five zero zero. Next up, I have payroll warrant number five for twenty-three thousand, fifty-six dollars, ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Art, seconded by Tony. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So payroll warrant number five for twenty-three thousand, fifty-six dollars, ninety-seven cents is approved five zero zero. And I have payroll warrant number six for twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents.
Moved.
Second.
By Tony, seconded by Art. Discussion? All in favor of payroll warrant number six, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Payroll warrant number six for twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars, forty cents is approved five zero zero. Uh, I have one more. Uh, it's check warrant number one for retirement contributions. It's ten thousand, five hundred, forty-seven dollars, forty cents.
Moved.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Art. Discussion? All in favor of approving the retirement warrant, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So check warrant number one for retirement, ten thousand, five hundred, forty-seven dollars, forty cents is approved five zero zero. Alright. Item five is warrant, is announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? I would remind folks that we are not vying, uh, voting at the firehouse this year. We will be voting at the town garage on North Road in order to have more room to spread out and respect social distancing. Uh, any day now, I, you should be receiving a ballot for the November third election from the state. We encourage everyone, uh, to vote absentee by mail. If you're, uh, worried about the mail, you can drop your ballot off at Coal Hall. Uh, we have a, uh, during office hours, you can take it into Marlene, slip it through the window. Uh, we have uh, currently, last I heard, we have the treasurer's Dropbox, which she is, uh, sharing with us. The ballots can be put in there if it's not, if the office is not open. Any minute now, we should have a larger uh, special purpose ballot box for, for votes. Dave, any word on how, when we'll be getting that?
But, uh, arrived this afternoon, and we'll probably have it installed, uh, by the end of the week.
Very good.
Uh, did, uh, anything come down from that player on Halloween? Whether is it up to everybody's discretion whether they go out or not?
Yes, we did get a, uh, I did see a note somewhere. I think it was on a, tagged onto one of the COVID reports that said, uh, they haven't come up with any statewide guidance on Halloween. People are to use their discretion. So I think David's plan is a good one that we prepare
For traffic.
To, uh, have traffic control out there and leave it at that.
Thank you.
Uh, I also would, uh, like to announce that we have openings for, uh, citizen in, uh, citizen service and on the Planning Commission and the DRB. Both of those five-member boards are operating at, uh, on four cylinders right now. So if you'd like to serve in either capacity, just, uh, call or send an email to me or Dave, and, uh, we will uh, take you into consideration. Uh, we, we are considering a DRB appointment tonight. Uh, the DRB in normal times would have a five-member board and two alternates, so uh, if we do appoint tonight, there's still a chance to participate. They like to have backup there because uh, if someone is not able to make it, uh, it causes can cause hardship for people who are looking for permits to build a house or start a business or, uh, whatever uh, kind of DRB action they're needing. So we like to have that backup, so we'd like you to consider that. Uh, before we get there, it reminds me, uh, I would offer to the select board, if you would like to, uh, go into executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss the DRB appointment. We could add that to the schedule now. Please. Alright, so without objection, we will add, uh, an executive session after review of action items to discuss DRB appointment. Okay, that takes us to item six, which is public comments. And I'll remind everyone that, uh, at, uh, it was suggested to us that it would be convenient for people to be able to comment before and after the meeting, so notice on your agenda that you can comment now, and you can also comment at the end after you've heard the, uh, the discussion among the selectmen and the things that go on during the meeting. So I'll open it up now to, uh, to anyone who would like to comment. Let's see if I open the, uh, the chat. I think I turned off chat, so if someone could just wave or get my attention, uh, and it looks like I've got more than one screen full of people, so if you want to comment, please speak up.
Yeah, Tim, there was a link that was in, um, Front Porch Forum that doesn't work.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. Uh, because Ted's been trying to get through. I gave, I gave him that link. I'll send him this link, okay?
Aye aye.
Oh, hi honey.
Here he is. Oh.
We're not in the same house, but we're still married, just so you know.
Well, we're glad to have Ted because we needed him for, uh, an item on the agenda tonight. Uh, I don't know what happened there. I thought I put the same information on Front Porch Forum that I did. Just copied it out of the agenda, so Ted, if you can-
Fifty-two, uh, characters? Yeah. No, it's hard. It's hard.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I guess the problem with Front Porch Forum is you have to, uh, you've got to copy the link or type in the, uh, the meeting ID, because the Front Porch Forum does not allow live links like we can do in a PDF on the website. Was that the issue, or is it something else?
I, the, the links didn't match.
Yeah.
Oh, it was a different link?
Yeah.
Okay, that was probably me getting my files juggled up, and I apologize for that. We did, uh, I think we, uh, oh, I know what happened. We have, uh, we have a lot of, uh, teleconferencing accounts going on right now because we're kind of moving away from go-to-meeting. And, uh, because a lot of people seem to like Zoom better, and I think I did it on the wrong one. I also have a Zoom con, uh, contract for the CUD that I also manage. And a go-to-meeting, uh, one for them too. I got confused. I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. I apologize.
No problem.
I'd like to make a comment. Um,
Andrea.
Thanks. Um, one thing that I've noticed for teleconferencing is that when, you know, people, we come into these meetings, some people have only their first name listed on their Zoom, you know, account, so like Art, and I'm sorry to single you out, Art, but it says Art. It would be nice, especially people being on town official committees, um, first and last name, so that people who come in, who haven't come to the meetings before, can identify people if they have a question about something or you know, just want to reach out. So I'm, I'm asking if that's a possibility, if going forward, people coming in could put their first and last name um, on their account, and if there's questions on how to do that, I can help anybody because I run Zoom meetings all the time. I just, I thought that might be nice. Is that something that, Tim, you think that could be possible?
Certainly. I think I can, uh, rename Art right now.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, Tim, have you recognized?
Sounds like Tom Hunchark.
That's correct, and thank you. I just have a quick question that I'd like to ask of the board. Um, it's a procedural question. As of July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, the Planning Commission has temporarily shelved the discussion on roadside commercial expansion. Um, according to those minutes, the discussion is supposed to pick back up on October thirteenth of this year. Uh, my question to the planning or to the select board is, what are the expectations of the select board from the Planning Commission, once these, um, conversations start again at roadside commercial, from a procedural perspective?
Um, if you could hold that question, uh, we are going to be discussing that topic tonight, and I think, uh, things may go in a different direction than when that, uh, all started up, so. Uh, but I think the, uh, the question is, uh, back then, our thinking was, uh, to ask the Planning Commission to consider the pros and cons of opening up roadside commercial along seven A, uh, to the extent that we had indicated at that time.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll just, I'll just hold, hold off until, uh, what about, uh, agenda item number ten?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, fair enough. Thanks, Tim. I appreciate it.
You bet. Other comments? Alright, we are going to move on to the treasurer's report with Melanie Dexter.
Hi, everybody. I'll, I'll make this really short and sweet since I just talked to you all last week, and not all that much has changed. You've got a very full agenda tonight. Um, the, the, uh, only thing I want to talk about is everybody should have their tax bills. If they don't, please give me a call. Four four two four zero three eight, extension two. Um, I got a stack of undeliverables today, and it, it is unfortunately your responsibility to get, if, if it's, if you haven't gotten it, it's your responsibility. You still have to pay, even if you don't get your tax bill, unfortunately. Uh, you don't get a free pass. So please give me a call if you have not gotten it yet. Um, if, if the property has transferred and you've still got it, uh, a copy of your bill, uh, don't worry about it. I have mailed all of the transfers to the new owners, so you can just toss those if you, uh, want to. Uh, people are being really good about, uh, uh, paying, um, through the mail, which is my preference, um, or using my Dropbox. Um, I'm sending out lots and lots of receipts. I just stamp it and send it right back, so that's working out great, and I appreciate people, um, who are being so adaptable. It's, uh, for everybody's safety not to have people tramping through, uh, Coal Hall unnecessarily. So that is working out really well. Um, a lot of people are using the online option, which is really convenient. Uh, and, and I encourage that too. There, there's one option that you do basically just a bank transfer for a dollar fifty uh, for the fee, which is, you know, practically the same as, as, um, uh, postage when you consider that you do get a receipt that way. So please consider that as an option as we get closer to the due date, which is November sixth. Um, I don't think I have anything else I wanted to talk about, but if anybody has any questions for me, um, I'm more than happy to take them. Okay, I'll take that as a no. Um, I guess I'll let you guys get on to the rest of your agenda.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay. Thank you.
Item, uh, eight is the appointment to the Elementary School District of a uh, new, uh, board member. There was a, uh, an absent, an absence, a vacancy in the board came up. We considered, uh, three candidates, uh, who spoke to us last time, uh, Joan Dornhofer, Mike Fennick, and Jeff Leek. Uh, all very qualified, uh, very competent, spoke well. We discussed it at some length in executive session, and the consensus there was that Jeff Leek would be our appointee. So I would be looking for a motion to appoint Jeff Leek to the governing board of the Elementary School District.
So moved.
Moved by-
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor of the appointment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, Jeff Leek is appointed to the Elementary S- School Board. Thank you, Jeff, for your offer to service, and thank you also to Joan and Mike for stepping up and offering to, to, to serve also. I had probably half a dozen people tell me how, uh, encouraged they were to see multiple people step up and offer to serve the town in that capacity, so thank you all.
Thank you too, board.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright, next up, we are considering, uh, a DRB appointment. And Ted Haberfield has raised his hand. If I switch back, there's Ted. So Ted, uh, I will, uh, start this interview with the same question I ask everybody for every appointment in this town is, uh, why do you want to be on the DRB, and why should we choose you?
Uh, well, I, as I said in my letter, I've been looking for a way to get involved, you know, locally since we moved here in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, I've heard that there is an opening, and it's the, it's something that I've always been interested in, I've always followed in any community that I've been involved with, what kind of developments going on, how it fits with the character of the town or city. And, uh, this, it, it's just something that I think I, I could be a contributor. I'd like to do, like to, uh, help out, and it's a, it's, uh, I've, I've have a history of, you know, with my work, reading a lot of regulations, trying to get, get clear on what the regulations actually mean. And so I think I, I could do this probably pretty well. Uh, it also gives me a great opportunity to start meeting more people in town and getting to, to know the town and its layout in a way that I haven't before. As far as my approach, I, you know, I think that right now, it would be primarily focused on, uh, reading the regulations, making sure I understand them. I've already done that. I, I got to the seventy-four pages of land use regulations, and, uh, I know I'll have to go over them a few more times, but I'm hoping it's a way I can contribute to the town.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the select board? For Ted?
Uh, I have one. This is Art Whitman. Uh, did you serve on any, uh, boards such, uh, either zoning or, uh, selectmen or anything in any of the other towns you've been in?
I, I have not. I've been in other professional groups and, uh, involved in those, but nothing in, uh, in town government.
Okay, thank you.
Ted, I have another question. I know that for a while, or, uh, when I first met you, you were doing a lot of traveling for work. Is that, uh, still the case, and is that conflict with the Wednesdays that, uh, DRB typically meets?
Uh, no, I am fully, uh, rooted in Shaftesbury now. Uh, I was commuting back and forth to Buffalo for a short, or in the beginning, but I've been here full-time now almost two years.
Very good. Okay, uh, hearing no other questions, we will, uh, move on to the next thing, and we will go into executive session at the end of the meeting and discuss, uh, discuss the appointment. So, thank you, Ted.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Tim?
Yes?
It's Tom Hunchark. Is, is there, is there any room for a, a comment to, uh, to support, uh, Mr. Haber, Dr. Haberfield's, uh?
Absolutely, that would be welcome.
Well, and I, and I promise I'll, I'll just take a brief, a brief moment. I think one of the interesting things about the Development Review Bar, Board as a whole is the makeup currently, and as far as, as long as I've been on the board is, we come from a, uh, the board members come from a, a lot of different backgrounds. Uh, we did have an engineer, uh, who had to unfortunately resign from board because of, uh, moving. But currently, we have, uh, myself, uh, being a retired chemist. We have, uh, a, a lawyer and, uh, an enge, an engineer. So, uh, when you start looking at skill sets, most of our skill sets are transferable, something that we have uh, learned in the past and now can adapt to becoming DRB members. If we take a look at, uh, Ted's, uh, curriculum vitae, you'd see that he has dedicated his entire professional career to helping people. And especially in the, uh, in the vein that he has taken, his avenue of expertise in clinical psychology. I think there are a lot of transferable skills that would actually be very adaptable to the Development Review Board. Now specifically, if we can just imagine what, uh, Dr. Haberfield does on a daily basis, when he engages people and tries to help them from what may appear to be a, uh, a relatively dismal position, I would assume the first thing he has to do is be a very good listener. So listening skills are very transferable to the Development Review Board, because, you know, you, you have to listen to the evidence presented and in a way that it's being presented. The other thing too is, if you look at, uh, Ted's, uh, Ted's, uh, current occupation, he has to be a very good communicator. He's got to take people who are basically, uh, strangers coming to Ted for help, and he's got to make those people feel very comfortable. And I think that's a very big asset for anybody who wants to join any one of the boards. Um, the population at large tends to view the Development Review Board as a very intimidating process, and I can see why. Uh, it's, it's, it's embedded in legal jargon. There are, uh, sometimes very convoluted processes one must go through, and it's very easy to get confused. One of the things that, uh, I, that appeals to me about Ted is, is I, I believe he has those skill sets to put people at ease, to make them feel comfortable, and, and to give them a sense of security when they come before the Development Review Board. Also, uh, along those same lines, just his, again, his, his, um, his, the way he's going to approach helping those people, he's going to have to possess the ability to think through very complicated situations. And sometimes probably very much on his feet, if you know what I mean, when certain things present themselves to him. He's got to be a, a, a quick thinker, and I think he possesses those skills, and that's also an asset to the board. There are a lot of times you're sitting and, uh, you know, a hearing will be going along a certain path, and then all of a sudden it'll take a, a quick turn, and, and you have to be able to adapt your, your thinking, uh, on the moment. And I think one of the most important things we should be looking at, especially coming from Ted's field, is, uh, empathy. Uh, the Development Review Board at, for the most part, looks at things possibly in what I would consider a very black and white situation, but we are dealing with, with that gray area where we got to make certain judgments. I feel that empathy cannot be taken out of that equation. You have to appreciate the anxiety that this type of, uh, process brings to people when they come before the Development Review Board. So as I mentioned, all those skill sets, uh, all those nuances, I believe, uh, Dr. Haberfield has, and I would like to encourage the board to vote in favor of appointing Ted to the Development Review Board based on, uh, what, what I see. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, that takes us to item ten. Roadside commercial zoning. Uh, which is, I imagine what most people are online here to hear about tonight. Uh, for those who maybe, uh, haven't been following this issue closely, uh, let me just take you back to what the select board was thinking when this came up, is that, uh, businesses like the Chocolate Barn and the Motels are grandfathered into rural residential zoning. That means that, um, they are not what's supposed to be in red rural residential zoning. That means that they are not what's supposed to be in rural residential zoning, but they were there before zoning. And so they're allowed to continue. We like those businesses. We'd like to see them continue. But the way it works is if they stopped operating for retirement or whatever reason, the law allows, the bylaw allows one year for sale of that real estate and for the same business to start up again in the same place. If that doesn't happen, then those, that business, that property reverts to the surrounding zoning, in this case rural residential. We had suggested opening up a section essentially connecting the Chocolate Barn and the Motels to roadside commercial zoning in order to allow those businesses to continue and have a, have a chance of continuing into the future because we like those businesses. Since we proposed that, we've heard considerable citizen objection. Further, we've, we have been informed by Jim Sullivan of our regional planning commission that expansion of roadside commercial essential, essentially in any capacity is a violation, or not a violation, but is inconsistent with the state zoning and development plans and inconsistent with the regional zoning and development plans. So the strikes were, you know, the, the, the momentum was building up against the idea for some of us. And then this week, we had the, we learned that, or last week, that, come to find it out on careful examination of the bylaws by our zoning administrator, in fact, roadside commercial does not allow retail stores. There are very few select businesses like professional office buildings that are allowed in roadside commercial and a few things like that, but retail stores is not one of those. And so our proposed solution to this problem was not going to solve the problem, even if we charged ahead in spite of the citizen objection or contradicting the, the state plan and the regional plan. So I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm thinking that's not going to work. And we should, what I would recommend is that we withdraw our charge from the, through the planning commission to look into further expansion of roadside commercial in the Hidden Valley area. And with that, I would open it up to comments from the other selectmen.
I've got one email.
Get you to pause.
And it is such a bad word. And I answered everybody.
Ken, can you pause for a moment?
Yeah.
I believe you have your phone and your computer going and we're getting cross-talk that's making it difficult, difficult to understand. Is that not your phone?
No.
Okay.
I didn't get that. It wasn't, I didn't.
All right, we'll, we'll try hard to hear you, but we're hearing two, we're hearing an echo, at least Diane. Is everybody?
I'm hearing everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm hearing an echo also.
Go ahead, Ken. I don't know that we can fix that right away.
Okay. I answered everybody.
Yeah.
And I didn't like the number. And I got one call back. And it was always through the ocean. And I had, I believe I do remember people that had gotten to me and that were in favor of it. So I would say if that issue, we will have to be turned to the hell.
I'm going to paraphrase what I hea- heard, excuse me, is that most of the people that you can have been talking to are in favor of expanding roadside commercial and that you are in favor of moving forward and putting it to a townwide vote to change the bylaws. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, other selectmen?
I, my original concern is that I, I just thought we should call a spade a spade. We can't deny that there is a pocket of commercialization at the foot of Bottom Hill. And I thought that probably it would be nice. And then when you look at the area leading up to it, several structures are business-type things where the people doing business out of their homes such as loggers and motels and all that sort of stuff. But if retail is not allowed in roadside commercial, then I think it is foolish to, to go ahead. I think that we've got to maybe expand the years into several years, the time that is allowed for somebody to take over a business if something goes out and still maintain the grandfather zoning.
Tony?
No, I, I, I think there's a process in place. I think we've heard from the residents. I think, you know, we need to consider it and hold back until we get a direction. We're here to serve the people.
Joe?
I'm on board with Tony. I, I think we need to hold back at this point so we do get a clear direction.
Okay, so I would be looking for a motion to withdraw our charge to the planning commission to investigate expanding roadside commercial in the Hidden Valley area. So moved. Moved by Tony. Is that seconded by Art?
Yeah, but I, I just want a clarification. We're only going to talk about just withdrawing the charge at this time.
Right.
Okay, yes, second.
Discussion.
What is, what is the motion?
We are, we had instructed the planning commission to investigate the feasibility of expanding roadside commercial in the Hidden Valley area. We are going to withdraw that charge from the planning commission, essentially postponing indefinitely any consideration of roadside commercial in that area, expansion of roadside commercial in that area.
If we do that, can we make another motion to expand, redefine the clause that the other members?
Yes, I'm planning to bring that up next. Okay, hearing more, no more discussion. Let's, let's call the roll on this one. All in favor of, the question is, shall we withdraw our charge to the planning commission to investigate expanding roadside commercial zoning in the Hidden Valley area? How do you vote? Art?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim votes yes. So that motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero. So the, the, the second one to talk about is what we've alluded to is, it was suggested by Jim Sullivan in the note that cautioned us against going against the town, the, the state and regional zoning plans was that we could consider extending the grandfather period to two or three years is what he suggested. I spoke to the planning commission chair today. He would seem to be amenable to that idea as well. So why don't we go ahead and take a motion to charge the planning commission with investigating extending the grandfather period to two or three years?
I would make the motion that move over five years.
We have a motion from Ken to make that charge for five years. Is there a second to that motion?
Tim, I, I guess I need a clarification. Is this, is this something that the zoning, that the, that the planning commission does or does the select board make that decision?
The way the process goes is we make a charge to the planning commission and that's not really part of the, the law exactly. But because of our working relationship with the planning commission, the way we have done things lately is they have their own ideas they come to us with. We also ask them to look into things for us. So right now we're asking them to look into this for us. And then that's where the law takes over and the law says things move from the planning commission to the select board, to the voters.
I would like to amend Ken's motion to let the, the planning commission look into what would be feasible for the number of years. I mean, maybe, maybe the state does not allow us to go five years. I, since we're just making a recommendation to look into it, I don't want to lock them in. If, if we make a motion to go out five years, then they have to consider that. I, I would like them to consider what is a feasible option and, and within the scope of the law.
Okay, Ken's motion was not seconded, so unless someone's going to second it now, it will, it will die for lack of a second. So now we could entertain another motion from Art that says that we would charge the planning commission with investigating extending the grandfather period.
And come back to us, and come back with us with a recommendation after looking at the legality of it and everything else.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is to charge the planning commission with looking at the feasibility of extending the grandfather period in zoning and coming back with a recommendation.
I talked to Jim Sullivan and he said that, because when I talked about commercial zoning, it extended the grandfather clause. And he said that he didn't have any problem with extending the grandfather clause. There's a lot of problems then, but we made it in the commercial.
Excuse me, can I make a quick comment? I think I can see why Ken's getting an echo. On the board, on the screen, there's one rectangle is one eight zero two three. And when Ken speaks, that lights up as well.
I was just.
So I think he's logged on twice somehow?
I was just going to make that suggestion to Tim. If you mute eight oh two three, that echo will go away. Well, let me, I, Ken. Before we do anything else. On my screen. I see that David, you are also listed as a host, so I'm hoping that if anything goes wrong, you'll still be on. And then coming back to Ken, Ken, you say something against?
Yeah, it's, all I've got now is a white screen.
No.
I think Tim found your echo.
Are you there?
Tim seems to have frozen out there.
Yeah, I just got a white screen.
Your voice is better now. We can see you.
Everybody was an echo.
Yeah, I think you had two things on there, Tim. We'll pause for a moment to wait for Tim to get logged back in.
Kevin Harrington is now host.
And the echoes I catch, it's a quick bit.
Just give us a minute for Tim to log back in.
Yeah.
He was correcting, and he apparently locked himself up. There he is.
I can hear you guys, but I got no picture.
Tim, you're muted. Tim, you're muted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Where were we? I believe we were in discussion of the motion to charge the planning commission with investigating extending the grandfather clause. We have any more discussion there?
I, I would love to see if it could be made retroactive too. How's that? I'm thinking of the, of the second chance animal shelter.
Art, what's your thinking there?
Well, if, if, if they come back and say, yeah, you can, you can extend it for three years, I'm wondering if, if we go back three years, if that is, how long has the animal shelter been?
Art has frozen for me. Is that happening just to me or is that to everybody?
No, just you.
So, you know, there, there were several people interested in the animal shelter, but because it was, had been a year since they moved out, they could no longer use it as for dogs and training and all that sort of stuff. And I was, it'd be interesting if, if we do it for three years, if we could say, could this be retroactive? And maybe it's been more than three years since the dog, since the animal shelter has moved out. I was just thinking of, of that.
We could add that as a question.
Yeah.
That we communicate informally to the planning commission.
Yep.
Any other discussion from the selectmen? All right, all in favor of sending the question of extending the grandfather period to the planning commission, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so we will, we will do that. All right, that takes us to item eleven and a handful of things that Dave wants to talk about with Coal Hall.
All right, we're looking into the exterior of Coal Hall. We've had a few interesting propositions. We have Naomi Miller here. Well, let's start with her because she's working with a group that would like to donate some trees to the property as we move to take down the town garage and reposition things around the building. This all kind of started with the accessibility modification grant we're working on. Coal Hall has to be brought up to better fit the ABA guidelines and make access to the floors much better than it is now. And outside, we've had an offer from the Bennington County Conservation District. They're working on a grant for us to fix the drainage in the parking lot, which is part of the municipal road general permit requirements. And we're also working, who, Shelley is helping us out, our zoning administrator, on a land and conservation fund. on a land and conservation fund grant, which is designed to increase green spaces. So the whole object for the exterior of the building is to broaden the veterans park out front, make it wider, do plantings and kind of green space in around the building. Instead of the way it looks now, just have it framed out and actually uh with some landscaping. Uh, and of course add in the, the accessibility uh items. But uh we'll let Naomi uh introduce her parties with us tonight. We met today, Naomi, myself and Jim White, who's our tree warden to discuss uh playing this out. And this is just for reference. I wouldn't expect to have these grants for several months yet. Uh, if we're awarded them and uh this project will go on through next summer. Naomi, why don't you explain your organization and take it from there?
Thanks, Dave. Um, so I work with a, a group called Climate Advocates Bennington, which is a part of the statewide nonprofit three fifty Vermont, which does um climate activism essentially. And uh what the group as a whole statewide is involved with right now is reforestation. Because of the recent findings about a year ago about how um if we planted enough trees around the earth, we could actually sequester enough carbon to to undo all the carbon that has been put out in the, since um the beginning of the industrial revolution, which is very exciting and could go a long way towards saving our earth. So um in Bennington County, where Climate Advocates Bennington is, is set to do is plant a thousand trees uh within the next year. We got a little waylaid by COVID, but um we are moving forward with that. We've gotten uh, we've gotten funding from a variety of sources and we will be um planting mass plantings of seedlings. Um, but we also um got a specific grant from the Maple Hill Fund in Shaftesbury that um that is something that was willed by um, a Shaftesbury resident, some of you may know, named Juliana Sentner. And um, she, she left this, it's a, it's a fund that is given out every year. And they found us and gave us money. And what we would like to do with that roughly two thousand dollars is to plant trees in Shaftesbury to honor Juliana's memory. And um, so what we thought of is fruit trees and we thought of really planting something that would be an ongoing food source for people in Shaftesbury as well as being something that sequesters carbon. And um, we've been talking with Dave and with Tim, um, both of whom have been very encouraging about this. We talked about um Howard Park a little bit, but, but really what seems to make the most sense would be to um bring some fairly mature fruit trees in at the north side of the lot of Cole Hall and have it be a piece of this entire reconfiguration that is in the works. So that is what we would like to propose to do is to donate. It would probably be ten or fifteen uh edible fruit trees to the town. Um, they could be planted, you know, anytime between March, April and August, as I understand it, according to Jim White. So that is our proposal and I'd love to hear the feedback from the rest of the select board.
I just asked that you put a Christmas tree on that list also.
That's part of the front renovation is getting a larger tree or a tree without the top cut off it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have plans? Do we have, do we have? Um
Architects?
Yeah, I mean architects and, and, and landscaper plans?
This is uh, this is the very initial stages of this. We had done a very broad plan last
Right.
The accessibility grant, but it, it was addressing so much parking and a larger structure that would come off the side of the building. It
Right.
We're looking to revamp that with different type of entrances to make the building uh accessible, which is the root of this issue. And then uh through these other groups, we've gotten these other grants to address the drainage, to address green space and this gift. So what we're moving towards now is, well, these are preliminary. We had Naomi and Jimmy in today just to uh give us an idea of what we should be looking at and their gift to us. But what we'll do is we'll engage uh about an RFP for the accessibility grant, because all that has to be filed in February, which is why this is a long term process. I'm just trying to be an advisor this, because this could be twenty-two before we see any accessibility money. Uh, these other projects these other projects could go ahead next uh summer or spring for the trees and some modifications out front, just we had talked about expanding the green space over, which for us is, we have a few good concrete guys on the crew. We could just move the driveway over and expand around where the current veterans thing is. And we had a request for a donation of trees to have memorial trees planted also. So there's, there's a lot of different factors, but we are going to be a, an architect for the ADA and talking with some landscape architects about what we should really look at outside. The original plans had upwards of fifty plus parking spaces. Well, we, we have no use for fifty parking spaces here. The, the biggest room we have is fire rated at fifty and I don't think we've ever had more than twenty in it. So uh, I would like to have a little bit more green to border the property in and just make this section of the town look better than our garage over here. And uh, you know, but it's going to take time, but I'm just trying to have the board aware that we have several funding sources and generous donation from uh Naomi's group. So we can do, start doing some things to green the area up while we continue developing the other plans.
Yeah, my concern is that um, that soil has been so pat down and so industrialized that it's gonna be, it's gonna need to be reactivated uh and made organic again to plant those trees. So uh, you know, I, I, obviously we need to research it before we stick trees in there. Um, uh, you know, I hate to see them planted and then die.
Yeah, exactly. And that's the one reason why we had Jim up today to give us some uh idea of his ideas, his thoughts about it from his, his background, which is pretty extensive in this.
Good.
Uh, going out to, well, RFP for uh a consultant on it or architect, which sounds expensive, but for uh the outside of the building, it wouldn't be that much. Cause we do have to look at the soils. Yeah, we've had really active soils. When we dig up the garage and we rip the slab up, it's going to be interesting to see what's there. So
Yeah.
There, there's steps here, which is why we keep looking for money and we have groups willing to do things. So uh that, that should help us out a lot.
Yeah, Naomi, thank you. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I just wanna um, I wanna point out um that uh one thing that Jim said today was that he can hook the town up with some free labor on that um soil remediation and uh through the high school ad department, right, David?
Um Yeah, it's something we could propose to uh, to the uh the high school. They have a group that does work like this. If it's something that would fit into their curriculum, we, we would have to see if well, first we have to discover, Tony said, we have to discover the depth of the problem here and if we have a problem, maybe as easy as us dragging up the first few inches of the gravel that's compacted around here. Uh, and of course, until we rip the slab out of the garage, that's uh kind of a wild card over there.
Which is why um I had thought perhaps we could start on the north side where the, there is slab um.
Cause the idea is to cut off the uh, this area to the north of the building, which is used as just people driving around the building now. Uh, was put there just so trucks could back into the salt shed. That's going to be gone hopefully by winter and it's not a right away. It's just people driving through, so we'd like to close that off.
You know, Dave, just an afterthought would be about those wires that are, the electrical wires that are interfering so much within the front of that building. I'm wondering if we can replace those in some way or alter them.
Yeah, they're, they're very annoying. Uh, they're very low and one goes right past the building all the way into the property behind us. So yeah, it would be nice if all those could be moved, because they are
Yeah. It would, you know, then we could plant Art's tree.
Yeah. And not have to take the top off and everything.
Yeah.
But we're at the beginning and uh, you know, we'll have uh more documentation as we get into winter, because it is a next year project, but
Yeah, no.
Art's good right now.
Uh, you know, you've had this vision in your head for a long time. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, as Naomi said, uh she and I have talked about this and walked around uh Howard Park and us uh when we were first thinking of going there with the trees, but certainly I'm in favor of of uh welcoming this uh donation. Very grateful for uh the offer and for her uh work with it and bringing it to uh, bringing it to us. So uh, I uh, without objection, certainly I think we can uh welcome the, the donation of trees and the other grants that uh Dave indicated. I can't imagine why we would turn down uh money for drainage uh or for uh what was the other one?
Those uh land and conservation funds for green spaces and accessibility.
So yeah, and then uh, and then that leaves us with the, the hard problem of uh, and as he said, the root of the problem is the, the access, accessibility in Cole Hall. But we can still uh, uh investigate that, but um, thank you, Dave, and congratulations on finding these uh these various funding sources and bringing them together. So what do you uh need from us?
Well, right now I just want to keep the board informed uh, because we are moving in several different directions and we hope to bring them all together uh for some applications, uh especially the big one. I will have to put out an RFP for an engineering or architectural firm to look at the development phases of the accessibility grant. Uh, the rest of them we can handle ourselves, but uh, we do need someone for that. And uh, I'll have to put that out over the next couple of weeks. We will cost us few, well, we'll see what the bids are uh to help plan out and assist in the accessibility grant, because to go to the grant, you have to have a plan. You know, it's, it's uh, you, you work into your application to get that money back when you're awarded the grant, but uh, we have to have something, like when we did the second floor of Cole Hall, I sketched that out myself and grew it and then took it to an architect and they got it passed the fire inspectors, but to do the accessibility grant, we're gonna have to find something, because we could be talking about as the first one came in, a two-story Lula, just a lift from the outside and that's, you need the proper people for that. So I'll be putting out an RFP for uh assistance developing the grant application and paperwork and appropriate documents for it.
Okay, without objection, uh, we'll allow you to proceed with that. Uh, I have one comment and I don't want to get into uh amateur engineering right now, but I, I wondered about removing the, the slab under the garage. Um, we will want some parking uh expansion in the design of the, the new whole Cole Hall space. And I wonder if we might um consider, you know, can we design around that and have a little bit of paint parking there uh rather than go to the expense of digging up who knows how many feet of concrete and then making gravel parking lot there?
Well, there's a, there's an issue with, there, there's a drain that runs the length of the building to the center. Um, I think it's important to remove that slab so we can assess the property better. And if, if we move, leave the slab there, it's not ever gonna ride the same as the parking lot. It's, you have to work on the edging of it a lot. But I think the best thing to do would be to uh remove it, but later on in the agenda we have, I'm gonna be putting out the bid for that uh tomorrow. Uh, and we'll see what kind of bids we get. Maybe that becomes more important if we get a very uh expensive bid with removing a slab. I have a feeling we're gonna have the building removed very reasonably, because there's a lot of scrap metal involved in it. Which is great, because we're looking for zero cost of removal, but the slab is a different issue. The slab uh, there's nothing anybody can do with except grind it up. But I think there are some reasons to dig out, dig that drain out and uh restore it to the proper levels there, especially for the drainage we're gonna be working on.
Okay, I can see that. Yeah, let's uh, let's see how expensive it's gonna be to take out and if it's reasonable, it sounds like uh you've got the right idea.
Dave, uh, I can't see, I lost your picture and everything here, but I can hear you guys. Uh, I think Peckham was recycling concrete. I don't know if it, if it still is or not. But you might want to check into that.
Yeah, they have been. Um, I'm not sure if they're doing it now. Uh, I'd be curious to see the state this stuff is in when we dig it up. Uh, and I don't even think it's a very thick slab either, to tell you the truth.
Uh, I think it's around six inches.
Yeah, yeah.
But you may find that there's a drain in the middle of that. It's got a uh, a drywall under it to catch drainage and maybe oil in that.
Yeah, there is. That's one reason why I want to get it uh dug up, because if we, we have to do remediation for oil and things, we have to do it.
I don't think it's a large area though. I think it's just that one
I don't think it is either. But the building's so old and parts of it is so hard to access, we don't need to remove part of it to look at it.
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise it's past all its environmental tests.
Yeah, yeah, but I think they may find one drywall right in the middle of that, right there, third floor drain.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. Uh, I think that takes care of Cole Hall and uh we can now move on to item twelve, which is DPW report.
Okay, Michael was gonna be here tonight, but he uh, well, fortunately for him, he's, he's can't be here tonight for a personal matter, but uh we will go on with the discussion briefly of the proposed purchase of a, a mower, but it's more than a mower. It'll be a multifunctioning tractor that will have a bucket to it and we can keep adding attachments to it. Uh, I know Art is, is aware of it and has discussed it with Mike, so he can probably add on to some of the technical details. But we're looking for some, something similar to a case uh tractor, you know, have, be able to mow, it'll be able to do quite a number of things. It can be a broom on the sweep uh and be a bucket loader back though. It all depends on what attachments you want to get for it. Um, I don't know, Art, do, do you want to add anything about the types of vehicles you've been looking at?
Yeah, uh, yes, he, he, uh, he started out uh, he got a lot of information uh from Mr. Houseley, who was the, was, does this for a living on what things to look for and all that sort of stuff. So it, he went to Salem Farm Supply who sells Kubotas and Internationals. Um, there, there is a Kubota that has a mounted mower on it, but it's mounted in the belly uh of the tractor, so it's ahead of the big wheels, which is nice for visual and that sort of thing, but if you want to use the tractor for something else, it's quite a job to take all that off and use it for a bucket and that sort of stuff. The International, uh, the mower is mounted three-point hitch on the back end of it. Um, can be uh disconnected easily. Uh, it, the price he got was with a bucket. Uh, then attachments such as snow pushers, buck uh, uh power brooms, all that sort of stuff can always be added on later. Um, I think uh, the John Deere we're using right now uh seems to have some flaws in that it can't go slow enough, so uh I don't think we should consider a John Deere. And uh, so uh Mike seems to think that the International, which is also what Mr. Houseley uses uh is probably the best uh the best deal for our money. It's not the cheapest, but it has the most versatility and uh seems to be exactly what we want.
How much is that with the mower and the bucket loader?
Well, that now brings me into my end of it, is the money we're ever gonna get it. The, the approximate price for this is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. This is not, uh, that was anything in our capital plans. However, there's a, a program through the State Treasurer's Office, the Municipal Equipment Loan Fund that provides loans for equipment up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars at two percent over five years. So at two percent over five years, annual payments come to a little over twenty-three thousand dollars a year. Right now we are spending close to twenty-four thousand dollars a year, either contracting with Hosley to do one pass and then renting a tractor for the second pass. So as an actual budget line expense annually, it's a wash. The only thing we would need to do is come up with the, uh, amount over a hundred and ten thousand. Uh, we've just added significantly to our available funds by the sale of the fire truck, which we, uh, cleared ninety-nine thousand dollars from the sale of that. So we can come up with the money for our part of it and we can apply for this loan, which has an October fifteenth deadline for the fall. Uh, and this is from the State Treasurer's Office. It's only over the municipalities. And it's, uh, I think it's two percent and, uh, with a maximum of a hundred and ten thousand. It's completely doable and in the long run, uh, it will save us money. In fact, it will save us money the first year because as I said, we're already spending twenty-four thousand either on contracts and renting a mower to do it now. Cause the deer that, that, uh, Art was referring to is, is, is the one we have is very old and, um, it, it can't do more than touch-ups. So we've been renting for a couple of years and it's time to, uh, to move on if the board's, uh, willing to it. I've gone off, prepared all the documents and we can have them at the next meeting to submit, uh, to the staging time.
So that's a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Does that include the, uh, the attachments that we need?
It, it includes a bucket. It does not include, uh, a snow pusher or other things that I mentioned, but it does include a front-end loader, a bucket, a front end, the forks on the front and, and, and a bucket goes with it. A snow pusher would be just a few hundred dollars. Uh, power broom, probably a little bit more if we decide we want, wanna go with it, but there's there's all kinds of things. Forks can be put on to lift, uh, pallets and all that sort of stuff. So it's, it, it's very versatile.
This includes mower?
Pardon?
This includes the mower?
Oh, absolutely.
And it's a mower on an arm, right? You mentioned something about mid, a belly mower that I didn't quite understand.
Okay. W- w- we wanted a tractor that we could use for a lot of other purposes. Kubota Kubota setup with a mower as the mower mounted in the middle of the tractor so that if you wanna use it, put a bucket on it or use it for something else, you have to take the mower off more than just quick detaching it. It's actually built on the frame of the tractor. So it's a, it's quite a job to take that off. But I'm just, was just giving you the reasons why we didn't consider the Kubota. It, it just was not, would not leave the tractor that universally usable. The mower on this is mounted on the back of the tractor and can be detached very quickly.
My only question I would be, you've got a tractor backhoe, now with a loader bucket on it. You've got a, a regular god deer loader. Why do we need another machine with a bucket on it?
Because you said, don't buy anything that can be only used just for mowing. Make sure.
So I understand that.
Make sure we can use it for something else.
Right, I understand that. I, I'm that. But I would say if you're gonna buy that, I would save my money for something other than a loader bucket because you don't need to, we've already got two orders.
If, I don't, I don't think the, if you're, he wants us, he really would like a snow pusher because it's really hard to plow snow around the, uh, recycling center, the, all the ins and outs and all that sort of stuff. It's a nightmare with a, even with a pickup truck. A tractor with a snow pusher on it would be ideal and you have to have the arms. You take the bucket off and put the snow pusher on the arm, so.
Okay, well, I'd like to see it, that's all. I get, I, I agree that you, you, you don't wanna buy something is a single-use machine.
That's right.
I agree with that a hundred percent. But I just, I, I don't wanna get, you know, I, I leave it to Mike. He knows what he left, but it's, it's, uh, I, I'd kinda like to see it myself, that's all.
Okay.
Information added.
Yep. Uh, we can go up to Salem and take a look at it anytime, Ken.
Okay.
Probably have this week.
All right, I'd like to see it.
Yep.
So this is a new machine?
Brand new, warranties and everything. Uh, and you buy it, uh, I think, uh, Dave, help me out on this. The internet, the, uh, Salem does not warranty the mower, so, uh, it's, you have two different warranties, is that right?
Yeah, I believe the, the manufacturer of the mower, which isn't Case, is, uh, would be having warranty on that.
Yeah, so it, it's not like Case is gonna throw up its arms and say, that's not ours. We actually have an actual warranty on it. Is that right?
Correct.
Uh, is there an attachment for that to reach over guardrails?
Yes, yeah.
Mower behind the guardrail?
Yes, this is not a, a, a simple ditch bank mower. It acts, it's just like what they're using now. It's got the big articulating arm that goes on the backside of guardrails and everything else.
Yeah, okay. I knew that.
Just exactly like, like Mr. Hosley, what he bought.
Okay, I, I haven't seen that, so I gotta rely on you guys.
Ken, what it has is a twenty-two inch boom mower with a sixty-inch rotary head.
Yeah.
Forty-inch, forty-eight inch flail head.
But, yeah, all right.
So it's got two different heads, Dave?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So it comes with a, with a, both a flail and a rotary head.
Yep, correct.
But, but, uh, remind me how how much time somebody's gonna be mowing a year with this thing?
Well, you have, uh, two extended periods in, uh, spring and the fall. We could do more in the summer and keep corners down. And you can also bring this out in the winter, because we have it, when you can do, uh, uh, work with it during the winter time. So it, it allows, we will be using it and of course, that's also, I know where you're going with that. So that's also the importance of it multitasking. Is that it can be used as a broom in spring cleanups. It can be used as a snow plow in winter. Uh, and it's always a backup because we do have two loaders, but one, the giant deer is not really leaving the yard. So we would have another one available to go out, uh, even in good weather to assist with things. And with all the multiple things you can buy to attach to this for the years, it will, could become very versatile.
Uh, Tim, to answer your question, uh, to do, uh, a good job, uh, two passes, uh, and several more on the corners, uh, we're guessing it could take as much as a full month. Uh, I think he says it's gonna take them about a hundred and twenty hours of working with the John Deere and I don't know if they're making multiple passes or not. But, uh, it could, could be as much as at least a hundred and twenty hours per pass. And if we do two passes, that basically is almost two, two months. So, somebody in that.
Yeah, well, I, I've always, I have liked the idea of, uh, hiring out the mowing. If we're talking about a month or two that, uh, somebody is not doing other crew maintenance, uh, and I presume this is a one-man job.
Yes.
So that's a month or two in the spring and a month or two in the fall that, uh, we're not, we've got, uh, you know, one crewman who's not doing maintenance and we've certainly seen, uh, lately the, the great improvement that, uh, in the roads thanks to, uh, a regular maintenance schedule and the guys being out all the time, always doing something. And it, it kinda seems like we're reaching with this, uh, you know, it's gonna get used for mowing a month or two in the spring and a month or two in the fall and then it'll be a third loader, which I'm not convinced, we need a third loader. Uh, and then it will, uh, push some, push snow, uh, at the transfer station on those days. I'm, uh, I'm not convinced, and it's another piece of equipment that we have to buy and maintain. I guess, uh, before I okay this, I would want to get Mike in here and see if he can convince me that, uh, this is a, you know, something closer to a year-round machine and not a, a, a two-month machine.
That's why you've got the attachments, Tim. Every attachment you add adds another job to do with it.
Okay, well, I've heard about pushing snow uh, with an attachment that's not too expensive. But that's, you know, that's a dozen days a year at the transfer station and if it's, you know, uh, a light snow, we might not even need it on some of those days because the transfer, transfer station might not be open.
It's what you use a broom for.
Uh, Dave, uh, can I ask Dave a question? When, when we put it out for bid, is there any other person that answers our bid for roadside mowing? Wasn't Hosley the only man in town?
Uh, yeah, there was him and he's retiring and there was Bud Orchid from up in the mountain towns. Those are the two responses that we, those are the only two we ever got. And just to point out too, that under our current structure, uh, one of the crewmen is running the mower for that month anyway already. So unless we put it out for the whole year, we would still have the crewman in the rented mower. And I think we're moving closer to having to rent the mower twice than finding a contractor to do it. Cause Hosley did a great amount of this stuff. The state's mower is from way out of this area. And I don't know, uh, I haven't seen much activity from anyone else. Most of the towns locally are running their own mowers. So it's kind of a dwindling business too.
Uh, Rupert has one, Benson has ones. The towns I'm familiar with have their own mowers.
Yeah, Arlington and Sunderland have their own, uh, yeah, it, it's, it wouldn't, you know, if you're talking about a, a piece of equipment like this, you're talking about a very long lifespan too.
Twenty years on the tractor.
Yeah, so you know, there's, there is some expense of maintaining it, but, um, as I said, for the first five years, what we're paying in rentals and contracts now will cover the expense. And then after that, it's, it's, uh, routine maintenance. Cause the operation cost is pretty much remaining the same. You know, I'm putting our guy in it.
So, uh, at the moment, aren't, aren't we using Hosley for mowing?
Only once a year because we had to talk him into it because he, he's firing.
This is his last, we're the last ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, so the other part of the year, we're renting a tractor now?
Yeah, we have for the last couple of years.
What are yours?
It's now, this year it's actually thirteen thousand dollars for the twenty days. And, uh, that can be a real push too. And then you have to start not maybe doing two passes everywhere. And it also prevents us from going out and tidying a place up. Or importantly, in the winter, when everything's down, you can put the mower up at an angle with a flail and cut back brush on the side of the road. Which we can't do now because we don't have anything to do with.
Well, I will say I'm more persuaded given that, uh, we are, we're not going to be able to contract mowing very much longer and we're going to have a crewman, uh, taken away to do mowing either in a tractor we own or a tractor we rent. And as you said, we can rent it. We can buy it for the cost of five years of rental, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Plus, plus forty thousand dollar down payment, it sounded like.
Yeah, roughly, depending on the final.
Yeah.
Final one.
Uh, yeah, I, I wish Mike was here, but Mike made the comment to me that mowing is it as, as important as grading and ditching. Mowing, if you don't, if, it, it's like you've got to do all these things and once you get them all going and working together, it, the maintenance is so much easier. But once you start mowing and do a, do a consistent job, uh, your ditches don't fill up as fast and everything else.
Yeah, he, he'd made that point to me several times and, and I should point out too, our, our contact with Hosley was for a single pass. So it's merely not pushing it back as far as it should be. Now, we'd have the flexibility of doing double passes everywhere. And in some spots pushing it back more on corners. So i- it is more effective and, and because we can spend additional time on it, it's worthwhile. And it is one of the pillars of road maintenance. It's the ditching, start the grading and cutting the brush back. You know, getting things away that are interfering with the road, keeping the sun off the road uh, opening up the areas around the ditches. In a lot of areas which we've improved a great deal, there were little trees and things growing up through all the ditches. And you know, that's that all leads to road failure. So I think they've been making great progress with everything and roads I think are definitely better. Uh, but this is one part that, uh, can still be improved. But on a rental schedule or a, or a contract, it's four weeks in the spring and four weeks in the fall and then we're pretty much done.
Okay, uh, you have, uh, you have persuaded me. Uh, you said that, uh, we can, uh, we can pay the down payment out of the, uh, the surplus we got from the sale of the old fire truck and the, uh, the, the loan payment will be essentially in lieu of tractor rental.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, Dave, uh, what, I, I bet you you could sell the old John Deere that, that we use occasionally.
Yeah.
To another town that would like to use it occasionally too, maybe?
Yeah, I think it, I think it'd be another thing for municipal uh, when we take delivery of the new one. Uh, we did very well, I'll get to that under the garage, but, uh, we did very well with them and I'm actually counting on the money we, we just, uh, we see from auctioning off of kind of all our junk trucks and pickup trucks to be, uh, part of any expense that comes from tearing down the garage.
Great. Yeah, I think, uh, I, I think we're stuck with the John Deere, aren't we? We've been trying to sell that for, uh, as long as I've been on the board.
Well, we, we's kind of backed off and we've been using it and not really trying to sell it. Uh, and I think, um, even a collector might be interested in that. It still moves and for light duty, it's okay. We can't mow the town with it because it's, it's difficult to run from what I understand, but it's, uh, it's kind of an interesting piece of equipment. I know people would be interested in buying that.
Okay, well, I'll charge you with selling it again, but I'm not gonna hold my breath this time. So we move it for us. Do you need a motion to buy the tractor?
No, uh, actually I just wanna make sure that we are in somewhat of agreement before I start the process with the Treasurer's Department and start getting paperwork together so that we can submit everything. So I'll be giving them all back in the first meeting in October so that you can do a formal vote and then we'll submit it all.
All right, sounds like a plan.
Uh, do you, I, I think there should be a vote that would, so we can tell Salem that we're gonna take it. Would you, Dave?
If, if we do that, it would, it would have to be contingent A on us getting the loan, which I wouldn't know until December.
Okay, okay.
Because what they do is they collect these, uh, the deadline's October fifteenth, Treasurer's Department. Uh, from my research into it over the last few years, we should do pretty well on it. But there's no guarantee we're getting it.
Okay.
We spoke with Dave Hosley and he'll pick up one round next year if we don't get it. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, I'd hate to tell him, oh yeah, we'll take that. We'd be better off
Okay.
Get notified in December just ordering one. And get take delivery in the spring.
Okay, very good. I understand now.
Okay, uh, any more under DPW report?
No, I have nothing else for that.
All right, other business?
Uh, I'm gonna put out the bid, uh, this week to demolish the garage. And just to be clear, the intent is to get a bidder who will, uh, take the garage down and absorb most of the, uh, expenses by the amount he'll be able to resell all the metal involved in that building. And I've also been approached by people who are willing to take it for free just to get the metal. So, you know, we hit, but we have to put it out, uh, and some of the people who have approached are back up and I told them they need a million dollar insurance policy. But those are easy to get because you're just getting it for the period you're gonna be working here. But those are easy to get, because you're just getting it for the period you're gonna be working here, uh, if you're, if you're a private person. But we'll put it out the bid, I don't expect it to cost us that much. And as I said, from the revenue we just generated from the municipal selling of some of these derelicts that we had around here, um, it should cover the cost, any additional costs to us. It's already been, uh, environmentally inspected, so we don't have any problems there. And we'll just, uh, get it removed, hopefully, before mid-December. But that's contingent on who bids and who wins and what their schedule was, and how the weather cooperates.
So you just need, uh, permission to, uh, put out an RFP?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, without objection, then we will let Dave put out an RFP for demolition of the garage and the salt shed.
Yep.
What's gonna be left, uh, this, this the slab?
No, I want the slab gone. It doesn't fit in with the, all the other plans, and, uh, we need to access that grain. And we, we need to, uh, seal up that, uh, holding pit there. Also, I think the septic field, too.
Yeah, well, all you gotta do is a bed and that, come dry out like that, maybe you do it.
Yeah, but you gotta get the, you know, you have to, there's, there's rules. Have to follow all the rules with it. Oh, and just on the salt shed, Tim, that's not gonna be part of it, uh, talk with Mike. We can rip that down with the cat, so we're just gonna do it, uh, when, when he has a chance, when the roadway comes to the end before the snow flies, or maybe even when the snow is flying, because it's, it's abandoned, it's just sitting here, so we'd like to rip that down, when they get a chance, we'll do it ourselves.
Yeah, that sounds fine, I think if three of us pushed on it, we could take the car.
Yeah. They did, it's nice carpenter, we're keeping it together its last couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I would call it, nice carpenter.
I did, I told that.
Any more?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing no other business, uh, that takes us, uh, again, to public comments. Anyone, uh, would like to make a, a comment from the public, we'll open it up.
Tim, may I comment? It's Jerry Schuth.
Absolutely.
Tim, first, I, I wanted to say I really appreciate the board's decision tonight to withdraw the recommendation to the PC. Um, as you know, I had written a memo saying I was against the roadside commercial rezoning, but I also wanted to say I would fully support the recommendation to, right, extend the grandfathering period for the existing businesses, because I agree with you, we want them here, so if we can keep them here, whatever we would need to do to encourage them to be able to sell their businesses, I'm fully in support of. And the last thing is really a comment for David Kiernan. Uh, the garden club, the Shakespeare Garden Club, which I kinda lose that, use that term kinda loosely, is a group of five volunteers that maintain that garden down by coal haul. Considering any landscaping or any things that get done, you have to remember they do need maintenance and watering.
Mhm.
And right now, it's five people that do that for the entire year. So just keep that in mind, because there are no, no maintenance plans, there are no maintenance plans, or nothing that doesn't require water and trimming and looking after.
No, e- exactly, that's why I wanted to bring in consultants, I'll admit I'm not much of a plant person, so.
Now, just so, so you're aware, so just keep that in mind, because we do appreciate, we do like to take care of that, it's something we're strong about, but it's a small group of people.
Well, we'll, I will have you in, and you can, uh, give him, uh, suggestions and everything, because, uh, as we had Naomi in, we have, uh, uh, your committee in.
Yeah.
You know, work on it together. This is a lot of-
Sounds good.
Lot of things we should do out here.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Well, thank you, Jerry, and thank you to you and the other members of your, uh, garden club for, uh, helping us maintain the front there for all these years. We're overdue to, uh, show our appreciation for what you've done.
Well, you're welcome, as I say, it's a, it's a passion.
Tim, this is Mike Day.
Alright, go ahead.
Um, I just would like to, uh, quickly add, uh, my support as one of the DRB members to, uh, uh, appoint, having the, uh, select board appoint Ted Haberfield to the, uh, DRB. Um, I think he'd be a great addition, so, uh, look forward to, uh, seeing that, uh, taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Tim, may I make a comment as well?
Betsy, go ahead.
I absolutely agree with everything that Jerry said. Um, and my first thought was wonderful, more trees. My second thought was, it's tough to get over there and water our little geraniums. It is, as Jerry said, it's a labor of love, and we do like keeping the front of coal haul looking pretty, but, um, low maintenance is, is the way to go. And there, there's a lot, um, they call them native species, they like to grow here. So, uh, and thanks to Naomi, I mean, it's a lot of hard work you guys have all done to make our town so much prettier, so thank you.
May I say something, Tim?
Naomi, yes.
Um, I just, I, that's a great point, Betsy and, and Jerry, and we have been, um, thinking about that and are really focused on figuring out fruit trees that will, um, not be, as David calls them, messy. Um, and that, and also that will be, um, optimally edible. So I think beyond the first year of watering, hopefully, they will not only be self-sustaining, but, but we can all work to get people getting there to eat the fruit, and then that, of course, makes, makes the maintenance much, much slower. Thanks.
Anyone else?
That, Tim, may I make a comment?
Tom, yes.
Thank you. Uh, I, too, would like to take, thank the, uh, select board for rescinding the charge for the planning commission regarding the expansion of roadside commercial. I believe you made the right choice, um, you've alleviated a lot of heartburn for the business stakeholders, and I believe the community at large in this particular area, where that would have taken place, so I, 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 I wanna commend all the members for doing that. Secondly, uh, I, I, too, would like to see the, uh, the, the, uh, extended grandfather period, I would support that, I think that's a, 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 definitely a much more reasonable approach to take. So whatever I can do to help the planning commission, uh, with their research, I would be more than happy to help them with that. And one last pitch, again, going back to Ted Haberfield, I think he's gonna be an asset to the board, so again, I encourage the board to vote, uh, in a positive manner and approve his appointment. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, hearing no other comments, uh, I'm looking for a motion from the board to move into executive session to discuss-
Tim, um, just give me a minute, uh, can I make one more comment? Uh, the, uh, Stanley Tools or Brooksteed, or whatever you wanna call it, uh, I've talked to Jim Sullivan, and, uh, I'm trying to get a hold of that comment, but I had not had it yet. We, we don't need, uh, another, uh, racetrack, collecting that, that, uh, tunnel down here to the right, down to the Stanley Tools. And I'm really concerned, we gotta somehow get somebody or keep somebody in there. Whether they do what they, whether we do what they did in Beddington, or make an apartment, or something, we can't lose that building. You gotta have some kind of a business in there.
I agree.
That's all I got.
I agree, and if you got any ideas on what we can do, I am, uh, I am open to them, uh.
I'm looking for anything I can find, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss the DRB appointment?
There's one.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Art, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, we will now move into executive session. Uh, Tim? We'll ask everyone to, uh, accept the selectmen and David Kiernan to log off. Tim, will you be, uh, taking action afterwards?
Sorry?
Will you be taking action?
O- o- only to close out the meeting.
Yeah, we will, uh, we will just adjourn when we come back from executive session. Okay. Thank you.